Call to order, the City of Dayton Council meeting for August 22nd, 2023. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So to avoid any kind of confusion, there was no coup. Dennis is on vacation, and so I'm filling in for him today. So we've had the call to order and the pledge. Can I get a motion for approval to the agenda?
You have to make a change.
You have the motion.
I'll motion.
I'll second.
So Matt and Travis, any discussion?
Yes, Mayor pro term and council, I would like to add one item, item L to the agenda. It's the last item. We will call it change order for West French Lake Road. It'll be for the 117th Avenue improvement. Thank you very much.
All right, any other changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or comments about the consent agenda items today?
None from me.
I'm good.
I'm Pete Keen.
You're good?
Yep.
I had a couple of smaller questions that Zach was nice enough to answer for me, so I haven't got anything on that either. So entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Scott, a second?
I'll second.
And Matt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, moving right along. Now we're now to the open forum. Anybody here for the open forum is limited to three minutes for non-agenda items. Please state your name and your address. No council action will be taken, and the items will be referred back to staff. Is there anyone here for... Yeah, please come forward.
Thank you very much.
Hello. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is John Waldron, and I'm a resident at Dayton Mobile Home Park at 209 York Avenue. And I've been a resident there since 99, so I've been been around for a while. The purpose of me coming here today is on behalf of myself and another 177 residents in the park. We have officially accumulated enough signatures with our residents to start our own community association. And a lot of our concerns we need to address with the park, and hopefully with a little bit of help from the city, we can do that in just some of the basic ordinances that the city should hopefully be able to help us have the park enforced. Basic things like safety issues regarding electric meters that aren't mounted properly and/or with loose wires that could create fire hazards, tree branches that are down since December on power lines, that these issues the park refuses to address or acknowledge with us. We have a resident manager, and then the park now is owned by a corporation that's out of state, so communication is very, very difficult. And it seems like they just do as little as possible to get by, and it's affecting the residents. And, you know, we have parking issues, safety concerns, like if there was a fire or some type of an emergency, emergency vehicles getting in. The park has not addressed that properly. They'll put out notices but don't really follow through with them. One of the suggestions that we have would be enforcing city statutes, state statutes, that vehicles are required to have current tabs and running, whether it's private property there in the park or someone's residence down the street here in one of the other communities, it's still, I believe, an ordinance that you must have current tabs. This, just some of the little things that can kind of help get the park's attention that, hey, we mean business, and we need to start cleaning up our community. Just a few examples there.
Then are are the streets within the park, are those private roads, Marty? That's kind of what I thought. And as far as the cars with out-of-date license plates, is, do we respond to those based on complaints, or are we out looking for them?
Ordinance violations are complaint-based.
Okay. So the police would respond to those based on a complaint?
So hopefully we can get together on that. And another big concern is building permits. A lot of residents there are building additions and putting on new roofs without getting permits from the city. And several residents have tried, you know, making it aware to the park management, and they aren't seem to do anything. I know myself personally, I've come in and, you know, made the city aware, and they'd send an inspector out, but nothing's followed up by the park on things. And it's a safety issue, because these mobile homes are engineered and designed to hold so much weight, and when you put a new roof on top of a mobile home, on top of another roof on that mobile home, that structure isn't, you know, sound and isn't safe. And that's just, again, another example of many.
Is there a CUP or IUP with the mobile home park complex?
Not that I'm aware of. We could check into it to verify, but not that I'm aware of.
Do those mobile homes still fall under the same criteria, as far as, like, you're saying, the roofing, do they have to follow the same kind of criteria and all that stuff, too?
Well, yeah, the permitting process.
Yeah, as far as the permitting process, yeah.
It's a separate, which Metro West could explain.
It's building code. They still have to follow building code, just like any other.
Didn't know if there's any loophole for that or anything like that. Okay.
Chief?
Sounds like there might be some assistance in enforcement issues or whatever that could possibly happen.
And the residents, they should, any resident in the community that pulls a permit should have that permit posted visibly. So, like, on Saturday, for example, I made a call, excuse me, I made a call because there was a home that was putting a new roof on, and they didn't have a visible permit. And I called in, the officer called me back, and they couldn't verify anything because the city was closed until Monday. I'm like, well, okay, but they should have a permit outside posted. And it's just, you know, simple things like that, that can help the community. We feel lost, literally feel lost. And I don't want to take up more time right now, I only have the three minutes, but, you know, it's, we're here. And we have a few residents today here from the community as well that, you know, we really, really hope that we can, you know, start making a difference.
Yeah, well, good. Appreciate you coming forward, and I think it'd be good for all of us to know a little bit more about the association that you formed and what kinds of things you're going to be taking on, and, you know, where the city can provide assistance. The way that this works is Zach and Amy, you know, take notes for things that need additional information or follow-up, and then if it requires council action from us, then that'll come back to us on a future agenda item. So appreciate your time.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone who came in.
Thank you as well.
Anyone else for open forum?
Oh, thanks. Perfect.
Hi, everybody. My name is David Hitchcock, live here in Dayton, right off of North Diamond Lake Road. Actually, Amy, I filled out an application to be a part of the zoning or the planning...
Planning commission.
Planning commission today, so.
Right.
But anyway, completely different related. I, when doing that, I found out that this was happening tonight, and I've never been a part of one, so I wanted to come. One thing that I did want to...
Please, can you please put your name and the address for the record?
Yeah, Dave Hitchcock, 15660 North Diamond Lake Road.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
One thing I did have a question about, I'm actually, I'm really excited about that Orchard, you know, Event Center that's going to be going in. It's actually right down the street from my house. One thing that did kind of strike, I actually was kind of on a five-year plan to do something similar, but I don't have the same acreage, you know, that she does. I was going to do it on a much smaller scale, but from what I understand, you guys are going to allow that to be done if you have a minimum of 30 acres, which I don't have. So I was just kind of, and maybe this is a conversation outside of this as well, but I was curious as to how you guys came up with that minimum, and if there would be exceptions, if I can accommodate on a much smaller scale, being much, you know, because we were going to do more of petite weddings, you know, in our barns and on our property for probably like 40, 40 or 50 people or less. And so I just, I'm excited for her. I'm all about it. I think, you know, the raising tide raises all ships approach. I think that would be good for both of us, even being right down the street from each other. But I did kind of want to find out if there's a process that I would need to go through in order to meet that same agricultural zoning, allowing events, but on a smaller acreage scale. So that's pretty much all I had. The other, I guess I did have another question. I'm developing a property in Plymouth right now, and I had, they had to send out mailer after mailer after mailer for rezoning the property that I'm working on, and I never received anything, so I didn't know if that, if that was a different process with the City of Dayton, or, yeah.
Yeah, in that instance, I don't think there was a rezoning.
I don't think she's rezoning that one.
No, there was a notification sent out related to the fact that there was an Event Center ordinance on the property, and there's an ordinance adjustment or amendment, but it was sent only to properties within 500 feet, and I just did a quick math. Your property is roughly 2,800 feet from the property.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And the property that you're in Plymouth is likely the same thing, where the minimum is 300.
Oh, okay.
I'm not saying that that's good or bad, but that is what the state statute says. So when you say mailer after mailer, it'd be within whatever Plymouth does, but minimum 300 feet of that property.
Okay. We're on our third set of mailers going out now. That, we're getting farther and farther down the road with that, so. But, so, yeah. Regarding the first portion of the question, is there somebody or like a time and a place where I can maybe meet and have a discussion further about?
I think you connect with Zach, and he'll get you the right person if it's not him.
I'll send an email.
Cool, awesome. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Now, this is almost a record for open forum. Anybody else today for open forum?
Dennis is missing out, dang.
All right, if not, we'll close the open forum, and we will move on to staff and consultant and council updates. Would you like to start, Zach?
I would love to. I thank you again, pro term mayor, I may get it eventually, and council. A couple of updates for me. We will have an all-employee appreciation party. That was a part of the process with the employee appreciation policy a couple of years ago. That'll be on September 20th. Council is invited, if you'd like to join. All facilities will close at 4:00 PM to accommodate this, just to let you know. So 4 o'clock on September 20th, it is a Wednesday. If you want more information, let me know, and I'll send you the details. I'll be out of the office starting on Thursday or on noon this week for the wedding that I have been growing this lovely hairstyle up for, that we call a mullet or something.
Shorter.
We shall see if it lasts past this weekend. It's been a long seven months of hairstyle growth, so we'll see if I'm really up for the challenge of cutting it or not. It's a lot of hard work and dedication. I did sign up for a leadership class through MMUA that meets monthly and lasts roughly a year, which begins in October, so you will see that come across in the payment of claims on Amy's credit card. So looking forward to bringing back those things that I learned at that leadership program. It is called stepping into leadership, and looking forward to bringing those things back to Dayton. And lastly, I do want to give a shout out to city staff here at the City of Dayton. I tend to take advantage of how good our staff is and just, again, take advantage of the fact that they are here for us. So everyone at the city, I want to say a shout out to everyone for a fantastic job that they do each and every day, and all I can say is thank you. So tend to take advantage of that, and I apologize, but don't, don't take it as a personal thing, so thank you very much.
All right, Amy?
I have no updates tonight.
Marty?
Just a couple of updates. We got some, I was encouraged to get good bids in on wellhead water treatment. I think those numbers exceeded my expectations. I thought they were going to come in a little bit closer to the engineer's estimate, so I'm encouraged by that. We'll have a special meeting on Thursday, I believe, to see where we go with that. The odd even irrigation, I did a little bit of Excel work on that to look, to see what impact that had. I looked at July, because it basically went on in the middle of the month. The low before we put it on, the low was 933,000 gallons per day. The low after we put it on has gone down to 776,000 gallons per day. Average usage before we put the odd even irrigation on was 1.4 million gallons a day, and posts it's down to just about 1 million gallons a day.
Marty, one thing you had commented, you and I talked about this a lot, and so one thing you had commented is that we also see a significant drop in the pressure of the system around 4:00 AM, which I told you wasn't surprising, because I know when our, we got ours installed, the person installed that just said it, 4:00 AM. And so I think it's good for people to know that you can run it all night long, doesn't have to be at 4:00 AM, it's an easy switch to change.
Yeah.
It can help the city from a pressure standpoint to change that to 10:00 PM or 11:00 PM or midnight or 1:00, whatever, something that's not 4:00 AM to help with that, especially because that kind of also then goes over when people start to get the sort of work. So I think it's just good for people to know is another way to help the city out a little bit, if they're interested in doing something.
Yep, totally. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Marty. Chief?
Evening. Just want to remind people that we're still having issues with carloads of people coming into our neighborhoods at night, going up to vehicles. The recent one, the vehicles were locked, and all the valuables were out of the vehicle, so nothing was taken. But we are seeing an increase still. I just want to remind the residents to call 911 if they see anything suspicious.
All right, thank you.
No updates here.
Scott?
Good, all out. Actually, there's a small update. Riverfest, Central Park, on the 9th.
What time?
So, music starts at 7:00. Food wagons will be there about 6:00. I don't think the beanbag thing is going very well, so there's only two teams signed up, and we're not going to have a first and second place, so.
Sure could.
Really good band, so hopefully we can get, I just want 5% of the city to show up.
What kind of food trucks you got coming, Scott?
Tacos and burgers and rotisserie.
Awesome.
Lots of beer.
Lots of beer. Top it up, right on. None for me.
Consumed responsibly.
Yeah, right, exactly. No updates from me.
Nothing. I don't have much. I am going to attend a webinar that the LMC is putting on, on the 30th, related to the state's new direct local housing aid for metro cities. So anything that I learned from that that is useful to us, I'll bring back. Otherwise, I don't have anything.
I have something quick. Marty, something brought to my attention that in River Hills, on the East Pickleball Court, the West Pole is coming up, tilted out and cracked, and it's, if you're paying attention, it's not a tripping hazard, but if you're not paying attention, it could be a tripping hazard. I went over there and tried to see how loose it was. It's not loose, but it's loose, if you know what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm aware of it. It will be taken care of here in the next couple of weeks, so we'll have to take that court out of action and drill down and do some repairs in there.
All right. That's all I have.
All right, moving on to new business. We've got Doug Baines, Chair of the Parks Commission. Come on up, Doug.
Thanks, sir. Leave me a couple seconds, leave me a minute, it'd be great.
Thanks.
My name is Doug Baines, and to give you a little update, I am the chairman of the Park Commission. I am also the chairman of the Elm Creek Watershed Management Commission, and I'm also a member of the West Metro Water Alliance. They pay me very, very well as a volunteer. And that is zero. So if you have any questions on either the Water Alliance or the watershed, please feel free to let me have it. So today, I have left with you here a park commission trail priority. These are segments of trails that we would like to see worked on over the next period of years. The first segment is Dunn Lake Road from 141st Cloquet Overlook Park. And then our next priority is the north side of Diamond Lake Road, Dayton River Road, excuse me, to Balsam Lane to Galloway Park. And the next one is the north side of North Diamond Lake Road to Vine Wood to 140. And then the last one is Territorial Road to Rush Creek Landing. So those are in the works and will be worked upon with Marty. Some of the things that we have been working on, we have been working on the Diney Houdell's Playground, the Hayden Hills Playground, and the second phase of the Stevens Property. Those have gone well this winter, summer, and we're in the process of replacing some trees, doing some overseeding work. I don't know, I think it has to cool down just a little bit, but that would be good if it would. So that's what we're working on there. In next year, in 2024, we have planned the Stevens Property Phase 3, the Brayburn 1 and 2 in the Iron Garden and Cypress Grove Neighborhood Parks, and the Sundance Woods Area 21 area that we're working on. So that's for 2024, and so we need to go through development of plans and whatnot. So we'll be sharing that with you as that becomes available. As I have given you here, we're also working on a trail plan and working on some funding there. In addition to that, the Water Trail Project is going strong, and we're excited about that. We've got more participants coming on board through the Park Service, Three Rivers Park District, the county and whatnot. So that's going to be a good project for us. The only thing we need is more water in the river. That'll come, I suppose, but. The last thing I'd like to just bring up is that, in my opinion, I've been on the Park Commission for about 20 years. I've been a member of the city for 25, 30 years. We are in urgent need of a commitment on an athletic field. It should be in District 11, it should be as far east as possible, but I think that we owe it to the City of Champlin to do something, to commit something. And I ask you tonight that you embrace that. We have been a member, when, we've been a member of the Champlin Dayton Athletic Association, and they have been very generous in offering fields and expertise and staff, and we have done practically nothing. They have basically filled out their town with athletic fields, now it's our turn. But we can't sit on our thumbs and just let time go by. We have to take action, and that would be a commitment on a piece of property. As far as financing goes, we can talk about that, but I think the commitment is urgent right now, so. Any questions that I can help you with? Wow.
None from me. I think I second your urgency, though, because my, my oldest is, was in soccer this summer, and it's hard to hold an 8:45 game for a school-aged child that goes till 10 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
It's, 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 it's way more packed than when I used to play, and, you know, it's, it created some, some challenges this, this summer, just trying to get kids either to bed or to a soccer game in pajamas, because there wasn't a game that we went any earlier than 7 o'clock. So it's, I can tell that CDA is, is filling up, and we even had to move games over to Fields over in Brooklyn Park, 610 is where a lot of our games were held at. So like, CDA is utilizing other cities and our funds outside, and other cities are capitalizing on that. So, yeah, we definitely have to do a shakeup and, and realign some things as far as the sports complex or how we align with CDA on those efforts, too. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it. Anything else?
No, I would just add to that, I think that as, as a council, we're supportive of moving ahead with that. I think that we're still waiting. I know we've got a broker engaged, and, you know, we have yet to, to see a property to, you know, review or approve, but it's certainly something that I think that we're all interested in, in moving ahead with.
That's all I can ask for. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Baines.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to the quarterly report, and I assume that's you, Zach.
You assumed correctly. I'll still let Amy do it this week, but she's not wearing the financial record hat this week, so.
Not next week, either.
Zach budgeted himself 15 minutes for this, let's see how on time he is.
We'll get it done in 15 minutes.
Did Zach do it, or did Amy?
Amy worked it together.
Good evening, pro term mayor and council, Q2 financial report. You did see this before the meeting, but I want to provide some information for you...
You did see this before the meeting, but I want to provide some information for you. General fund cash balances, as you can see, there's so far normal operations through the first part of the year. The biggest change we have is the fact that our balance is the lowest it's been in the last four years. That also has to relate to the fact that we have not had any building activity, which we normally see through Q2, which is our strongest typical months of building activity because everyone wants to get stuff done and pull permits before the summer starts. Typically, we see a huge influx in building activity dollars that happen in Q2. We did not see that this year. Now, we still have operations that are holding strong and still doing and operating just fine. So we do rely heavily on the tax levy, which we did not receive until July 3rd. So it may not be included in the June 30th number, but we got it on July 3rd, so it didn't come shortly after that. But again, the biggest change is that building activity, which is mostly showing that we have the lowest cash we've had in the last four years. I will preface that by saying on the next line that we are almost directly on budget for the year from what we've had. In total, we roughly received $2.6 million of tax revenue as of July 3rd. So if you take the bottom number in the column, which would be in the actual through number, I can't, oh, I think, the third base of the middle column here, if you took this $2.7 million dollar number and add 2.6 to it, we are about break even over through the year. So again, we are right on track with expenditures and revenues in total. Some of the things we do pay upfront, which are like the, paid entire bill for the assessment services so far this year. We paid all of our insurance up already this year. Some of those things we will have less time on, but we also have more parks work that's being done in the second half of the year. We also have more work that's being done sometimes with, in city staff or in, you know, activity center stuff or whatever else that may happen. Fire suppression's been pretty good and overall, I think we're pretty close to budget for as many repairs and maintenance items and things that have been unforeseen that we had no clue about this year overall. But again, it's, we look at cash balance and go, that's not good, but again, it's mostly related to that building permit activity. So not a lot of changes from Q1, a lot of the same explanations, just exponentiated with changes in costs. Some of the things that you see repairing mains and stuff may have happened in July as well, which you're not seeing on this Q2 report. So like the $35,000 repair that we had on the fire truck, not in that number. So some of those things we had that are through the year that we will have to work in in Q3. Any questions overall so far on the general fund and overall operations? Again, we're about break even through Q2. We might be a little upside down, a little bit right now of Q3 where we're at so far just because of those other items that you've seen recently. However, we will see our second half tax statement or settlement in November. I hear any questions? Cash balances by fund, not a lot of changes from Q1 to Q2. Again, we had a debt that fell off, the 2013 A bond fell off. So again, we moved those monies over to the next bond. And again, that's kind of the trend we have is that when we pay a bond off, we move the money over to pay another bond off early, which we did with 376 this year. And so again, those transfers coming out. And then again, the 601, which is probably the biggest increase, those mostly related to the fact that we had to cover a large balance in the 2022 Tiff Street improvements just based on negative cash. Shows that we have basically half the cash we did at one point and that's really not true. We've had about the same amount of cash now than we had at the end of the year last year in the water fund. Just happened to be that it was all put into the 459 or Tiff improvements. We did fill that bond, we got the money in, so that bond is now up and running and the money's back in the water funds. Any questions on cash balances by fund overall? There wasn't a lot of changes from what you saw in Q1 versus Q2. Water fund overall, this is some changes that we had here. Again, nothing major changes from what we had in Q1 to Q2. Our charges for services are up. That's obviously related to the number of homes. Our rates did go up as well. Miscellaneous, that's all related to interest rate earnings. We've had a lot more interest earnings this year than I ever would have thought we would, especially with the market that was in a year ago today. We had no clue what was happening and so we expected to have lots of mark-to-market adjustments, but we have offset those with interest earnings and that is a good thing. Overall, current water sales are in the middle or basically keeping up with the current expenditures we have. It doesn't keep up with depreciation and we'll talk about that more during the post-September meetings with water and sewer funds and enterprise funds when we're talking about those things in the second half of budget season because depreciation changed significantly in the last audit, as you remember, that we had to have a bunch of assets added to our books that we had no idea we had or depreciated them for. So we'll have to have a conversation of how much depreciation we want to do. Again, some cities do 100%, some cities do 50%, some do 25% and some do none. It really depends on how much cash you want to have on hand in order to replace things as they need, as needed, and how much you want to be able to bond for them when it's needed for repairs. We can figure those things out during the budget season. Any questions on the water fund overall? It's still healthy, everything's still moving forward. Again, you'll see on Thursday, we'll have the large wellhead treatment that'll be approved and that'll come out of the water fund or a portion of it will. It won't affect total cash. I mean, it affects it, but it doesn't affect it more than what we thought it would. It's actually an asset impact than we thought it was going to be. So overall, water fund is healthy. Sewer fund, again, charges for services are up. That's related to new growth and new people, changes from, in miscellaneous, that's interest earnings again. If you see the negative number, which you saw on the water fund and the negative number in the sewer fund, that is related to the fact that we had mark-to-market adjustments. So basically, we invest in something, we're going to get the money back, but during the year, it's worth less and less if the interest rates are terrible. If like, say, we invest in a 2% investment and by the time we go to sell it, it's still a 2% investment, but nobody wants to buy it because now you can get a 4% investment. Now it's, the mark-to-market adjustment is less. We still get the money back out at the end, as long as we hold it all the way to maturity, which we always do. There's very few times over history of myself being a financier that I've ever even contemplated selling a bond or selling some sort of investment early. And that's just, again, good luck in not having to have unforeseen expenditures that you couldn't afford. Overall, sewer fund is just fine. We don't have a lot of expenditures here. You can see that sewer sales aren't keeping up with current expenditures. Not super concerned about that, only because we're a month behind. So basically, we bill out for May and June in July. So you have May and June usage that is not being included in sales, which is the same for the water fund, that all of the expenditures are included in the individual funds, but we don't bill out until July. So we don't accrue or pull back and say, okay, well, these monies are actually for June and May and June, we should pull them back into Q2. We do that at year end. We don't do that during the year process. It's just a cash basis during the year. It's not accrual basis. Not too concerned about sewer sales overall. We don't have a lot of demand on sewer as we sit today because everything goes to my council. So as long as the pipe works and it's not flooding up the street and Marty's not calling me, should be good to go. Happens every once in a while, but... Any questions on the sewer fund overall?
We don't anticipate any big expenses coming on that one.
Related to my council or related to sewer?
Well, sewer that, in general, that we would be responsible for.
Nothing major. I mean, the biggest thing that's being constructed right now is a lift station down at, by Graco, but they're constructing that for us. If something breaks on that, yeah, sure, that's going to be an expensive replacement, but being that it's brand new, I don't see any major ones. Pumps go down, backup pumps go down. Every once in a while, we've had a couple of those where we had to pull in emergency services to get basically the lift station sucked out so we can get the two new pumps in there, but we've been really lucky with those things so far and we don't have any major, major things unless Marty can think of any off his head, but I can't think of anything that's going to be like... We don't have a wastewater treatment plant in town that goes to my council, so that's a... Smaller communities such as ourselves or whatever that are in a greater Minnesota area are going to struggle with that because it's a constant struggle to keep up with wastewater treatments and what's needed with those things, but us just sending it down to my council is just a cost and that's it. My council's costs are pretty stagnant year over year just because of the fact that they have such volume that it just, the increases aren't normally sustainable. Any other questions in the sewer fund? Again, just a quick summary. Just want to let you know that the cash flow on the general fund looks really poor this year. I don't take that into consideration when you're looking at overall finances. Overall, we are very healthy. Cash balance has increased roughly $12 or $13 million since I've been here in two and a half years. So our funds are very healthy in every aspect and hopefully we can continue to have that moving forward. Again, the idea is not to spend all the dollars we have, it's to be able to have some full reserves when things happen. Any questions about the financial report? No action needed, just to be able to accept this as basically the presentation.
Yeah, I guess the only other question I would have would be, you know, we talked about this earlier, Public Works is, you know, is pretty significantly over budget and I don't see, you know, any likelihood that that's going to come back on into budget, but, you know, do we anticipate, some of that was unexpected, well, a good chunk of it was unexpected things and we had a ton of snow and, but I'm just wondering if there are any other things that we know about or can predict that would negatively impact staying on that budget month to month for the balance of the year?
I'm going to defer to Marty on that because it's his department. I don't, I can't foresee anything in the conversations that Marty and I have had. I can't foresee anything. I know that we're pushing out as much as we possibly can, knowing that the budget's at where it's at today. Repairing maintenance items are things that are just going to happen, but I don't think we ever saw the fact that these costs are going to be so high or things were going to break so quickly in succession, I would say, but I'll pass on to Marty.
A lot of it was due to a hard winter and that has transferred into some of the older equipment having issues and breakdowns. Some of that equipment had been stored outside for many years before we moved into the new building and a lot of it wasn't maintained after, the snowplow basically didn't get washed down until the spring. So there's a lot of rust and those kind of issues with those pieces of equipment. And so with the extra snow, the heavy wet snow this year puts a lot of pressure on those type of vehicles. So that's where a lot of that came from. And then additional costs in maintenance supplies and stuff like that has gone through the roof a little bit there. So that hasn't helped us, but I think that we're in a better shape now. We'll see what happens through the end of the year, but the equipment is still old. We do have new equipment on order now, so hopefully that's going to come in next year and we can just ride this through until that equipment comes into play.
Thank you.
Your question? Thank you very much. Any other questions related to the report at all or any overall questions about finances and so on and so forth?
All right. Thanks, Zach.
Thank you very much.
We will move on to item L. I don't know who gets the thrill of presenting that one.
Scott looks ready. See, you guys' game face on down there.
So I will start by saying this is a change order discussion, but this one is very different from the typical change orders that make it all the way to council, which is a handful of the ones we receive. The reason I say that is this is not critical work to keep the project going or for project completion. In fact, it's, I'll say, to some extent elective work. It's recommended, but it's not necessarily needed. And similarly along those lines, the work has not yet been completed. So this is coming before you now to see if it's money you would like to spend for the improvements proposed or if it's something you'd want to forego and not move forward with it. So I'll run through what got us to this point and why we're suggesting these improvements be made and then we can discuss what action you'd like to take. So just a very quick reminder of the West French Lake Road project itself. It's a segment of West French Lake Road and 117th Avenue highlighted in red. The project was broken into two contracts. Contract one, as indicated, was completed by a city contract for the construction. Contract two, which was that along Landspec property into the north, was constructed by Graco as part of their improvement obligations with their development. So during their construction of it, they had, and I think it was even mentioned earlier in the meeting today, the lift station being constructed on the project by Graco was greatly facilitated by allowing a full hard closure of the roadway to complete those improvements. It took a lot of timeline off of that project and it lowered the expenses by not having to have bypass accesses and others. So Graco requested a hard closure. The city looked at it and staff agreed to the closure. However, the closure did require, as can be seen here, a rerouting of the construction traffic through other streets through town. They had been going north on West French Lake Road out to 124th to Brockton, which is shown in the green dashed, I'll call it. The closure disallowed the continued use of that and therefore had to be rerouted directly east, which included a section of 117th that has not been improved since, I think it was 1998 when that was last worked on. The area, I'll say to the right or east of that highlighted portion that's marked on improved, that was all upgraded significantly with the Brayburn Trails development. So that was constructed and is in the condition that can support the traffic. So we're really, we're focused on that .4 miles or about 1,800 feet in that segment and concern being is that if we're going to run a bunch of loaded trucks over it and haul materials in, that that's just going to further deteriorate already in poor condition roadway and we would have problems. So just a closer look at it. That's the segment. So I highlighted the roads in green that have been upgraded with projects and then that in the middle, that 1,800 feet that I mentioned, is the segment of concern. And if anybody has driven that, it's in pretty rough shape. It's pretty poor. Marty's guys have obviously been out there a lot. You can tell by the number of patches and the layer of patches out there. It is staying intact, but it's in pretty rough shape. So what we're thinking would be an appropriate improvement would be a full-depth reclamation, which is they just grind up all of the pavement and the gravel, mix it with the underlying gravel and then pave a new surface over the top of it. Not quite the full effects as a full reconstruction, but substantially cheaper cost without all the excavations and the additional material being hauled in. The thought would be is that it would probably extend the pavement life five to 10 years, maybe more with proper maintenance and we might have to resort to patching if projects don't come along ahead of time, but that could be maintained. And then I'll just make reference to the DDL, if any of council remembers that. That's a development that came forward quite some time ago with some concepts, went idle for a while and they're now currently in process of an EAW review, which is, I'll just say, essentially step one of that development moving forward. So though there's no timeline identified, there is certainly interest in it and we do expect something to move forward on that property in the next maybe two or three years. Might be longer than that before the north portion of it is constructed. The north portion would trigger upgrades to 117th Avenue where it abuts the, that there and that's, if you can't read that, which I can't on that screen, 800 feet is about that distance. However, that could be five, 10 years out, depending on how fast that project progresses. So I can come back to this figure. That's what's proposed for the improvements. We did request, mostly out of convenience because it directly abuts the city project and they will be doing like work, they'll be paving, doing the final paving on their project. We requested to add it onto their contract. So requested a price for the work and they returned the price of $173,000 for that work. Just to note, and I think this was in the information for your packet, we did request the same information from the Zanzibar contractor working up there just to get something to compare to. Surprisingly, very, or maybe not, very close in cost. The Zanzibar quote was slightly higher. I think that was probably just due to the separation of the two projects and just because this is easier to coordinate and it was slightly cheaper, we just moved forward with consideration of change order to this project rather than the Zanzibar. So that number has been verified, if you will, or vetted to some extent. So, and then just to mention the potential revenues that could be used for the project. This closure was to benefit Graco. There was some indirect benefit to the city, but it was predominantly for Graco. So we did work with them to have financial obligations towards these improvements if deemed appropriate. That agreement, and I may be off slightly with this, I know it was a $50,000 agreement and it's 50% of the costs in excess of a dollar amount and I think it might be slightly different than 150. I think it might be like 160. It was a reference to a different number, so I could be off slightly with that number. I apologize, I didn't have that to confirm, but the change will not be much. It'll be very minor in perspective of it. Another thing, and I tried to outline this in the staff report if any of you did have a chance to read it. I know that came out really late today. The project for West French Lake Road, we included a line item in there, so a payment item for construction, maintenance and removal of a temporary access road. We did that because there were so many projects going on in the area and we didn't know the timing of any of them. So we included some provisions in the contract that if they would have to build a road to get out to, say, a county road somewhere due to closures or other conflicts during the construction, we could utilize that pay item to compensate the contractor for that work. So their bid was around $96,000, about 96, 6, I think, for that work. We only used about 8,000 of it. We had to do a little bit of it up by capital partners on the north end, but other than that, we didn't have that, we didn't have to build any of this, so the contractor was never paid that money. So there is about 86,000 or 88,000 left in the contract that will not get paid to the contractor. So one way of thinking of it is this is a temporary access route, if you will, so that was the intention of this money, so you could think of that portion being utilized to cover this cost. So that in addition to Graco with their obligation, and again, I did the math on the $150,000 estimate, would leave the city responsibility of about $23,000 for the improvements as proposed. Does that make sense how I broke that? Okay. And then this would just be the formalities of the contract itself, that's the original contract amount for the original improvements, the previously approved change orders, the current amount, the proposed change order and the final. So this is all included in the paperwork and again, just kind of the formality, more of the question here is do we want to do the improvements or not? So our recommendation is to move forward with the improvements and include or complete the work via a change order to this contract. We can certainly discuss improvements or anything else on this or...
I have several questions. I suspect there are others.
Sure.
As well, but since I got the hammer, I'm going to go first.
Get her done.
You know, I understand the approach using the, or, you know, going to the existing contractor because there isn't, you know, there isn't some of the setup costs that go with writing a new contract with a different contractor, just doing it as a change order. That makes sense to me, but my question is the 173,000, you know, there must be tools that you use that give you, you know, what's an expected cost per mile for this kind of paving and, or 100 feet or whatever increment you use, does this come in line with that? Because we're really not in a bid situation for it. You've got two prices, I think that's helpful, but we're not really bidding the work, so...
He used the contract prices for the majority of it because it's like work. So you're right, that price is actually broken on down to, and I did not include the list in the presentation, like 12 or 14 work items. So it's different types of work, each one with a unique cost. That's how all of our projects are structured, so it's never this much to get that, it's this much to reclaim, this much to pave, this much to do shouldering on the sides, this much to stabilize. So it's all broken down and we did review it, we actually worked with them, we were able to whittle down a little bit on the costs and we did actually reduce the section a little bit to save some additional money. The road didn't quite deteriorate as far as we expected it to, so we actually did thin up the pavement a little bit, it shaved off about 30,000 on it, but to answer your question, yes, we did, it is in alignment, nothing's...
Sort of passes the smell down.
Yes, absolutely.
The 88,000 that we see as available on that existing contract amount, how comfortable are we that we're not going to need that for something else related to the original scope of that project?
All of the other roads are open and exit, other than the closure to the north is still barricaded, but there's, I would say, I'm 100% certain that that would not be used for other access purposes.
The wear course on that?
The wear course is not yet on and that's, that's actually why this came up so quick. We thought the wear course would be late September, we were going to bring this to you in early September for review and approval before they did the work. We were just notified they might be able to do the wear course paving early September, so we didn't want to wait too long and have them go offsite and then say, you need to pay us, bring our equipment back. Because they're already, will be out there, so...
And I think, you know, while this is an add, you know, that road is in tough shape, it was before and it certainly didn't get better throughout this, you know, it probably would have scored pretty high on our road survey anyway, that we would be addressing this before too long, so there seems like there's some efficiency in doing it now. The other comment is around that intersection, 117th and East French Lake Road, is a scary one. For me personally, I've almost been hit twice on that, once on my motorcycle, which was way more fun.
Four-way stop.
It's not, it's not, it's a two-way stop and visibility on the northeast side is really bad and people blow through there. And I'm wondering...
Stop east-west and north-south.
Stops on 117.
Right. Yeah. Is there anything we can do to improve the safety? I know that's outside the scope of paving, but, you know, those are our roads, right? We can, we have control over them.
City's got full jurisdiction of all, so...
To me, it seems like it needs a four-way stop, but, you know, just the grading of it is, you know, is part of the problem.
Yeah, the sightlines are decent and they're not great, the skewed angle makes it tough. I mean, you always want to cross as close to 90 as possible and granted, it's not at a tight angle, but it is skewed, which makes the visibility poor, so, or harder at least. Certainly a four-way stop could be considered, we've actually talked about this at a staff level of what we do there and to be honest, we talked about doing that now, but then the thought was, let's wait and see what happens when Dayton Parkway opens and see if that makes the answer more obvious, because there was actually a change, do we want to stop the opposite traffic and let the other go east-west was one of the ideas. And knowing that there's likely a change coming once Dayton Parkway and West French Lake Road out to Rogers does open, there's probably a shift in traffic now, we're going to post this to no trucks, so hopefully there's not deliveries or other using it, but we all know that they do it anyway, that the traffic patterns will probably change on this intersection and then we can evaluate it at that time and make the change separately from this improvement.
Is there a downside of just doing a four-way stop now and then seeing how traffic flows later? I mean, I'm just curious, do we proactive versus reactive, is there a downside?
It's harder to remove than to add. It's considered more dangerous because if you do remove it, people that are used to it rely on it and don't have it.
Even if you swap it, you still have to remove signs, you're going through the same...
That would be a change as well.
Either way, right?
We want to hold off on that as well. Any change in traffic control, that's why all the extra orange flags go up and they get left up for a while with it, but, and that was exactly the thought because you might have been at our discussions, I don't know, because you're nailing all our points, that do we put up the four-way and then see what happens? But that being the thought, if we, if we would want to take any of it down to increase efficiency, then that could create more hazard than it was intended, so. The thought was to wait and give it a little bit of time to operate with all of those roads open.
My concern is that it's just going to get busy with all those roads open.
It's going to get busy, absolutely.
It will absolutely get busy.
Especially, I think you're going to see a lot, once that Dayton Parkway stretch goes in, people will go to a Twins game, I see a lot of people...
Going to 94.
Going to 94, down Zanzibar, down French Lake Road to get down there.
And Marty and I have already talked about the four-ton weight limits and others, but I expect quite a few delivery trucks as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd rather, I know we're way off topic now, but I'd rather be proactive than reactive on that and I don't know what the right answer is, but I'm with you.
I mean, I'm glad to hear that you guys have been talking about it as well and I would rather do something sooner than later. It just seemed like this, if we move forward, I'll get ahead of the group here, but with this, this change, we're messing with the road anyway, that this would be, you know, an opportune time to make that change.
Yeah.
What would be staff recommendation if we want to do something there now?
I mean, really, all that would be warranted is a four-way stop.
I would recommend a four-way stop.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, they're a long ways out from a signal or other.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, another thing, and I'm trying to envision it because I've been at that corner so many times in the last year, but sight distance aren't terrible, but we could look at improving those as well. I don't know if there's any blind spots on there, there's none, maybe on the northeast, but I'm not...
I think on the northeast, there's, you know, but that's not in the right way, I don't think.
If I remember right, but certainly we should take a look at that and, I mean, that's the easy one, trim back vegetation or minor grading if necessary to improve those sightlines as well, can do wonders.
Yeah. Well, I would encourage you to take a look at that, I think something should happen there. Others, that's all the questions I had.
Mine was, this is another example where that pavement management study would have been nice to have now, this was all I was thinking as I read through this. The repurposing, I think you said the way I was thinking of it, which is, we would have been able to build a road otherwise, instead of building a temporary road, we can use that money to fix the road that got worn down even more because of the increased traffic on it. So I think that's a, in my mind, that 88,000, this question's here 100%, which I don't hear anyone say ever, positive, we're not going to get any other need for that, I think that's a fair reallocation, so, and thankfully, Graco's willing to work with us as well on this. They have some part to play in this as well, so I think that's a fair piece for them to do and I think that means that the additional cost of, what's really the additional cost amount of the change orders of 24,000 that the city wasn't already planning for, I think is a, in my opinion, is a fair trade-off for the road that we're getting in place of that, so that's kind of where I'm at. The only other major question I had is when that DDL lane gets improved, how do we ensure that whatever road they use to go in and do this, that they're then going to put extra heavy runs down with trucks and equipment, that we budget in that that road gets, ensures its quality into the future? Because my only concern is spending money on it now and they're going to run all the trucks right over that road anyways and then we're just going to be...
Two years down the road.
Two years down the road, we're going to be looking after replacing that road again because of it.
They will be, that will be the development responsibility, they will be responsible to upgrade that.
Okay, we can build that in.
So to be honest, on that segment, it's, this is essentially abandoning.
Yeah.
So we did evaluate some options because we knew DDL, though we don't know the timeline, we know they will be, well, we suspect they will be in relatively soon, I'll say next probably eight years, they'll be building on the north, which would trigger the improvements. They will have to upgrade that, there'll be some utility extensions and other, so we actually thought about, do we leave that segment out and just do east of there, because there's no projects or potential developments known, but now do we leave that segment out to just fumble between?
Good road, better, yeah.
And we, I think staff at least all agree that for continuity and just, I mean, the efficiency due to the scale, I mean, you cut it in half, the project in half, you're only cutting costs probably 30% because some of them are set, so it wasn't the benefit we hoped for or thought.
The other piece I wanted to ask about was, is doing this going to delay the timeline for the rest of the road, because I know the people on those roads are ready to be done with construction, so I don't want to have to...
Completely independent, and that's why we're here, is because we just wanted to make sure it was tacked on to the wear course, so it would be done in conjunction with that.
So we'll slow down the green line to the west at all?
No, they're doing cleanup work now and again, we thought they had work to carry them into late September, they said they might be done early September, so that's why the emergency agenda item here, but...
Hence why it's on this meeting, otherwise we would have waited till the 12th of September because we were just waiting. I've got my questions answered, I would agree now's the time to tack on the four-way stop, in my opinion, because I think if you're going to do it, there's a new road, it's going to drive people to move faster anyways on those roads, I think now's the time to do it, but that's my opinion.
Sure.
Scott?
Scott? Travis?
My only comment is, are we confident the 50 grand from Graco is enough? I mean, it's their project that created the issue, correct?
Yes.
So why didn't we not negotiate with them, hey, after your construction is over, you're repairing this road?
We negotiated with them and asked them to do the full thing and their answer was pound sand, so...
If I could add one to that as well...
Well, when somebody tells you pound sand, you've got to revert with the same...
Correct, so we did come up with a...
So you want to do your project right.
We had back and forth conversations over many, many times and came up with a, what was fair for both of us in costs and deterrence and whatever else.
Because in reality, the 88 that you saved on the one project, you wouldn't have to spend if it weren't for the damage to the road. Am I wrong?
I will clarify.
I'm not wrong.
The road didn't get any more damaged than it already was.
Yeah, I don't think it was starting in a good spot.
It did not start in a place that was good. I would say it was more at best.
These improvements were needed independent of our project, definitely warranted. I mean, it's in rough shape and I don't know how often Marty's guys are down there, but if you go and look, there's patch on patch on patch.
When did we hit our head when we were taking the tour that one time?
It's definitely warranted. To be honest, I expected it to look much worse. I expected a bigger difference between the before and after of using it for a haul road. It wasn't all that noticeable, but on that same hand, that was done this year. There could have been, you know, further distresses under the surface that will show up this winter, too. So though it didn't necessarily crumble or visually look that much worse, there still could have been some structural damage that will expedite the deterioration next freestyle and beyond, so that's why our recommendation for placing what I'll just call a Band-Aid or a, it's a pretty hefty Band-Aid, but putting the Band-Aid on here to make sure we get life in this road.
I don't have any problem fixing it, I mean, we have to fix it, there's no question about that, I'm just, I'm just saying that it would have been a little harder on Graco.
I squeezed the lemon as hard as the lemon could be squeezed.
All right, Travis?
No other comments from me, but I do like the idea of adding a four-way stop there now, because I do, same with everybody else, it's, I'm thinking of the residents that are just to the, what would that be, east of there, Braeburn, they would probably benefit a lot from that, so...
Sure, just on that note, I think we'll proceed with this and then we'll work with Public Works, just going through the signing manual to get the...
Yeah.
Advance warning token and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think one is dependent on the other, I think the timing is, just gives us the opportunity.
Yeah.
Will we have that by next meeting so we can have it up by the time that the road's finished?
The stop signs?
The proposal to put whatever measure you feel is proper for the intersection there.
Oh, yeah, I'm pretty sure I know what it is, I can give you what I expect.
That's fine. I just want to make sure this isn't, we're going to get back to you and then we don't hear about it again for five months.
No, I was just thinking because it's not similar work, we don't have anything in the contract related to signs, but that's something we can coordinate easily through Public Works.
We don't need to bring that back to the council. Okay. Do we need to vote on it or should we vote on it? No?
Does it just four signs? You don't have to put any like stop ahead, like there's no statute that says you have to have?
That's what I do want to review.
Okay, all right.
So we do want, we'll probably want some temporary one signal change ahead with additional markers to flag it, at least on the north, we'll probably put on all four lanes, but at least on the north-south, I don't know if we'll need a stop ahead as long as we have that signal change or traffic control change sign, but we'll reveal the manuals and make sure we're doing it properly to ensure it's safe.
All right, then we need a motion.
I'll motion that we go ahead.
To approve this change order.
I'll second.
Matt and Travis, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, sir.
If there isn't any other business, we shall stand adjourned.
All right.